Thumbs up.
All right, Natasha gave me the thumbs up, so we'll get started. Before we do, I like to just address everybody here tonight. And first of all, say thank you for coming. But this is a business meeting, so what that means tonight is that we will actually be voting on the topics and the agenda. And of course, we will have an opportunity for public comment. And if you'd like to make a public comment, it's important to fill out one of these cards and submit those to me. There's two ways to do that. You can make a general comment if you'd like to speak before any of us do, or you can speak on a specific topic. Right now, I have two comments from Ann and Bob. Both are on 6A. So when we get to that agenda item, we'll give you guys an opportunity to speak. When you do speak, you'll get three minutes, and we'll have a timer there. It should be up there. You'll be able to see the lights, green, yellow, and red, and you'll know when you get close to your time limit. And if you go over, I will let you know you went over. So I'd ask that everybody be respectful of each other tonight. And as I say always, you can yell and scream and be mad at us, but please be respectful of staff. They work very hard to put our meetings on and take care of us, so please be kind and polite to them. That being said, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So tonight, first on our agenda is amendment and approval of the agenda. And I have one change that I want to make. I'd like to add an agenda item, which is we need to have a discussion this evening on future meetings. We've got a couple of things coming up, that workshop and a budget committee meeting that we need to change. So if you guys are okay with it, I'll put that at 6B. Good with that?
Yeah, what do you want to title it?
Discussion of future meetings.
Good.
Is that good? Anyone else?
So I just had one thing on I consent agenda, approve Curry transportation agreement with ODOT. So I was just in Eastern Oregon and Bend area, and I will approve this as long as there is no roundabouts in our Curry County.
Roundabouts are great, John. They're great.
I guess I'm just not into them. I just...
They're extremely efficient.
They're more efficient if they're not operated by Americans.
You're on my side, right, on this?
No, I love them.
Oh, you like roundabouts?
They're great.
I love... I think we ought to be driving on the inside of the road.
So you want to pull it to discuss it?
No, no, I'm just saying that I'm not a huge fan of roundabouts. I don't see any in Curry County.
All right.
And I looked at this, and I didn't see any in that plan, so...
Okay.
I remember once there was a little bit of talk about it, but I have no...
No other amendments?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved? Second?
All right. Anybody opposed? No? Posited passes, three to zero. All right, so now I will present item three, which is the state of the county. So put some time into this. I mean, there's so many directions we can go with this presentation, but I think it covers all of the major issues that we had talked about and that lie ahead in the future. So I'll begin. The mission of 2023 was efficiency in the face of adversity. As we started the year, you may remember that the commissioners set goals and got to work implementing them right away. Those goals were economic development, infrastructure, public trust, financial stability, and quality of life. I'm going to tell you about some of the things that we have accomplished for each goal, but you might notice that a lot of these things aren't just checking the box for one goal. They really support each other and speak to a collective strategy to improve life here in Curry County. First, we have some good news on the economic development front. The county's tourism and local economic services are fueled with a small portion of the funds we bring in from transient lodging tax. Among other things, that money allows the Economic Development Department to assist in the creation of new jobs, support local enterprises, and introduce new initiatives to enhance economic stability for all of our residents and visitors alike. One of the wins we had this year is a grant from Travel Oregon that will allow us to bring a beach wheelchair rental program called Wheel the World to our local beaches, starting right here in Gold Beach. Everyone should have the ability to enjoy our beautiful coastline, and this is just one way to make it more accessible. That said, economic development doesn't reach its full potential unless we can drive opportunities for the workforce, and the biggest priority there is increasing the availability of housing. I've seen so many people who really have a passion for this area leave because they just aren't able to find a place to live long term, and that applies for both newcomers and natives. The county just recently got the good news that Oregon has set aside $500 million to back local housing projects. We have the chance to offer up a few projects of our choosing and get those funded. The board's priority is not only creating economic opportunities, but also allowing housing and other infrastructure projects to move forward. I don't know about you, but when I think about infrastructure, I picture housing, community resources, and transportation. But it's more than that. Before I talk more about this, I need to reiterate something that's very important. This Board of Commissioners does not, and I want to emphasize "does not," support windmills and will adamantly oppose their introduction into our ocean. A huge leap for county infrastructure this year was the finalization of the transfer of state grant funding from the county to the Rogue Siskiyou Regional Fire Training Center. Once completed, this facility will not only provide robust training opportunities to local, regional, and statewide first responders, but will also provide a firearms range accessible to our public. We are excited to see the ways the center benefits our local communities, and it certainly will enhance our response to wildfire season. Now, you all may remember on April 26, 2023, the county was a victim of a cyber attack that in some way, shape, or form affected all county services. This affected every local official, department head, staff, and our citizens, but it also provided an opportunity to band together and resolve the issues. Not only did we grow stronger as a group, but this time of vulnerability gave us a chance to ask for help. The assistance provided at a moment's notice by our counties, state agencies, nonprofits, and local municipalities was incredible. People we had never met, spoken to before, were here working side-by-side county staff to get us through it and restore services to our citizens. It was through these relationships that we were able to find strong, long-term solutions to problems that had plagued this county for years. Although the hack devastated our ability to provide essential services for some time, it allowed us an opportunity to grow and become stronger and ultimately more efficient. Our IT infrastructure is now more secure and faster than ever. Our IT policy is current, and the transition to a .gov domain is planned in the near future. I believe that true character is revealed in adversity, and I am proud to say that our character is strong. A huge unforeseen advantage that came out of all of that was being able to develop a long-term relationship with the LANE Council of Governments, and you may have heard me previously refer to them as ElCOG. And let me tell you, that has been invaluable. They still are a crucial facet of the county IT department, and it turns out that our partnership doesn't just stop there. A capable, qualified, and knowledgeable finance director is exactly what is needed to renew financial stability. As we move through the fiscal year and begin preparing for the next, at this meeting, we will vote on the hire of Kena Wolf. In fact, we're going to do that here in just a few minutes. Kena left her position as Finance Director for ElCOG in order to accept the position here in Curry County. Last budget season, we immediately recognized that the true state of the county finances was unknown. The most concerning problem was that our accounts had not been reconciled for the previous two fiscal years for a variety of reasons that I won't get into right now. The emphasis here is not making excuses for the past leadership and what could have been done better, but on the present and what we can do now to fix it. Excuses are lies. This year, our Budget Committee was faced with approving a budget that was balanced using a combination of educated estimates and one-time money. This year, our department heads have made it work with a careful combination of discipline, double-checking, and quite frankly, a bit of luck. This year, staff have been hard at work reconciling the books to ensure that our finances will be accurate going into the 24-25 budget season. Next year, that won't be the case, and I can speak for all of us in saying that is a huge relief. For a few years, we have been aware that the county is expecting a financial crisis. We now know that that will be a reality in the spring of 2024. You see two financial cliffs loom in our future: the general fund deficit and the rapidly depleting road funds. We were able to address the road fund issue early in the year by redirecting priorities and reorganizing the process of equipment purchase and use. Through that process, approximately $5 million was saved. Almost a quarter of those savings are attributed to a fundamental shift in the way that fleet vehicles are purchased. Instead of new vehicles being bought every couple of years, there's a new emphasis on the maintenance and longevity of our existing vehicles. The Road Department is here to maintain county roads, and they're doing a great job, especially during our recent weather events. Additionally, we've looked at how departments are run and have been able to purge much of the duplication and redundancies we saw in day-to-day procedures. At this time last year, the county had 139 employees, and today, we have 124. Part of getting our financial house in order was eliminating of different admin positions at the advice and direction of an outside efficiency expert, which adds up to about $800,000 in salaries and benefits being saved. Now, the reason I'm sharing these things with you today is not just I feel it's my duty to keep you informed, it's also in an effort to make sure you know what we are dealing with and to ask for your help. In other words, community participation and input on important topics is a driving factor of how we, as your county representatives, advocate for you. That ties into public trust. Because the way I see it, trust goes both ways, and it starts with us. Because of your input, we have changed meeting times to accommodate working people and have begun holding meetings and workshops in both North and South Counties on a regular basis. The strength of our community lies in active community participation on key issues, and that, in turn, ensures that the voices of all of our citizens are heard and valued, shaping the future of Curry County. A great example of this is a recent airport road logging site in North County. As I mentioned before, we can't change the decisions made in the past, but we can listen to the people and use that input to shape the decisions we make moving forward. We got some really good input from North County about how they want to see that land used in the future, and I truly appreciate each and every person who came to tell us their ideas on the land's best and highest use to benefit not only the county, but the residents in years to come. Making improvements requires change, and even though everyone will admit to wanting to improve, the changes required to make that happen are not often met with the same enthusiasm. Making these changes is not difficult. It's the resistance to the change that creates difficulties. That brings us to quality of life, the foundation of which is safety. The past year, we had quite a few disasters. The loss of Highway 101 near Arizona Beach heavily impacted travel and shipping, but our Sheriff's Office and emergency management team did a great job of getting us back on our feet. In 2023, we had three major fires all around the same time affecting the county. Forest fires are always on my mind, and even though they seem to be a yearly occurrence, they never become any less concerning or damaging to the quality of life here in Curry County. Although we made it out without damage to any structures, tragically, one young firefighter, Benjamin Charles Sapper, lost his life. And that is a harsh reminder of the dangers that first responders face on a day-to-day The primary safety duties rest with the county Sheriff's Office. Currently, the county is able to offset the costs needed to perform patrol services with road funds. However, current staffing levels do not allow for deputies to be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, I want to give you a look at what lies ahead for our county. I mentioned the financial deficit, but I don't think that we've really described what that means for the county. Because we don't know exactly what the carryover from last year's budget will be, these numbers will be approximate, but it doesn't make them any less impactful. It's been 10 years since we have addressed the law enforcement funding issue by taking a survey to hear the opinions of our citizens. Some of you may have been contacted for comment during a recent survey issued by the county to gauge public support for a law enforcement funding solution. Again, we really want to know what the community thinks. If the citizens want a levy, then we will design that levy to meet the specific desires of the community. This year, $4 million was transferred from the road funds to the Sheriff's Office to provide limited services. Now, in the wake of Measure 110 and with the upward trends in violent crime, we know that we need a fully-staffed 24/7 Sheriff's Office, and no one wants to use road funds to fill the gap, and we need to take that into consideration when planning for the future. Based on information available to us right now, if we stop using road funds to compensate sheriff's patrol, we will need to cut county services across the board by 49%. If we continue to use road funds to offset the deficit in the sheriff's patrol, as has been done in the past, we will be looking at approximately 31% of the county's budget being cut. Those cuts won't be one department or service. They're county-wide and will severely impact our ability to provide even basic services. We, this board, must either find a creative manner to handle cuts or a hefty funding solution. Hope is not a good plan. This Board of Commissioners must provide you with a funding solution that will enable the county to increase the response times for our Sheriff's Office, provide quality veteran services, support a district attorney's office that will be able to prosecute all crimes, and maintain a fully-staffed county clerk and assessor's office. So this board will present a well-thought-out solution that will be what the people want. Our solution will follow the law, county policy, and be what is ethically correct. So today, I want to announce that the May primary ballot will include a levy to fund 24/7 deputies for the Curry County Sheriff's Office, to maintain the county jail so they can accommodate arrest made by police in Port Orford, Gold Beach, and Brookings, and will ensure that our district attorney's office has all the resources it needs to prosecute those criminals. This levy will have oversight in the form of a group of citizens chosen by leadership to follow through with purpose and intention. This levy will be reevaluated in five years. The levy will fund the level of service we, as citizens of Curry County, rely on in the present day and in consideration of the ever-changing threats to public safety. In May, we will provide you, the people, the opportunity for change. If you choose to fund our Sheriff's Office, you will see a level of service you have not seen before. And that concludes my address, and certainly open for discussion.
Very good. Well done.
I agree.
It's a... I felt like I needed to clap. It was very thoughtful, very, very thought out. And, you know, everything you said is correct. I mean, the level of funding as we know it to be is what it is. I think we've... You know, one of the things that we talk a lot about is not getting caught up in the surf, right? Getting caught up in the reaction, but actually continuing to move everything forward. And so you did a great job. It was a great... It was now, you know, now we have to... Well, we need to put action in front of work, you know? We have to fall through.
We do, and, you know, we've anticipated this coming. We've discussed it. We've made adjustments. We've shuffled the deck as much as we can. We've shored up as much of our infrastructure as we can by, you know, reorganizing, redirecting, but, you know, this is why I'm here. It's why I ran for office. I signed up for this. I knew this would be the biggest challenge I've professionally ever faced. You know, I mean, I look at the wages we currently pay our employees, and it's, you know, and the challenges of housing here and all of those things, and I'm thankful for the people we have. You know, I look at our Sheriff's Office and those young deputies, and, you know, I look at what they're risking for the pay that they get, you know, and how hard it is to recruit and what those struggles are. And I'm concerned about our safety as we look forward with all of the things happening in our society and our world. We need them. You know, you go back to those fires, and you think about the role that our Sheriff's Office played in those fires, the evacuations when we had to. We've got to fund that. We've got to strengthen that up. And we have some difficult and tough choices ahead, but I think as a community, we can come together and we can solve that.
If there's no further discussion, we'll move on in the agenda.
Brad, real quick. Sure. By this time, normally, we had... By this time of the year, we had... Dave probably can detest of this, we're our county treasurer. We've had... We knew something was coming to shore it up, and it's February of 2024, and...
There's no ARP money. There's no tribal money.
There's nothing that's said. There's... So this is, you know, Curry County's been hearing this for a lot of years, but we've always got something, you know?
The last minute, somebody's come in and given us that bone.
And it's just not there. And I'm going to speak about it in my commissioner comments. There's a lady who has property up John's Place, which is between Carpenterville and... Oh, it's on Carpenterville after... North of Cape Ferrell, when it comes into Carpenterville. And she has property up there, and it has been totally destroyed. She had to leave because her partner was dying. She's an elderly woman.
So are you not going to do that in commissioner discussion you're going to do?
Yeah, I guess I can just...
But let's have it now. Go ahead.
Is that okay? Anyway, because everybody's going to leave and not hear the commissioner comments anyhow.
Okay, all right.
But just she... And these tweakers and meth heads and have taken over her property and destroyed it. And she's... You know, her mate has passed. She's back here trying to clean this up, and she thanks, you know, the deputies that we do have, but there's stuff going on that just cannot be allowed to go on any longer.
Yeah.
It's just wrong. And we need coverage. We need deputies.
Well, and, you know, the Sheriff's Department does everything they can, you know? When we don't have a deputy on duty, of course, when you call dispatch, they're going to call deputies. They're going to find someone to come to your call, but they're, you know, they're coming from home, they're coming from other parts of the county, and there's no one on duty. And, you know, in my old job, if you've ever sat down with a victim of a violent crime and talked to them and had to interview them while they were waiting for the officers to show up, the deputies to show up, the fear that they've had, it's a horrible thing. And, you know, those are some of the memories that certainly stay with me and will forever. And we need to have a 24/7 Sheriff's Department. We need to. We have to have that. As we move forward, with all of the things that are happening in our world, we've got to have... We've got to provide that to our people. And we will definitely provide the community with a choice to do that.
Well, the bad guys know when there's coverage and when there's not. That's the bottom line.
They sure do. It's all over social media.
Was she able to... Are they off her property now, or...
She's back here and getting it cleaned up with the help of...
There aren't people living on it at this point.
No, but there's... Nope, but there's another house down at the bottom on the right side going up that is veterans' housing, something to do with veterans, and it's just nasty. Junker, junker, junkers.
All right. Any further comments? All right, we'll move to item four, which is general public comments. Again, I have no public speaking slips for general comments, so we will move to consent agenda, and that is agenda item five. So there's a couple of hires on here that I want to talk about briefly. I mentioned Kena Wolf. She's in here. You know, we... That is a... We got very lucky. Her level of professionalism and expertise, we don't see that here. That's an incredible opportunity for us to, especially in the current state of our finances, pulling her in will... With her expertise, that's... She's going to be able to navigate that and really make a huge difference in a topic and at a time that is most difficult for us. And then I see Val here in the back of the room. She is on here under G, and we're going to hire Val as our Public Information Officer. And Val brings a lot to the table, but, man, we need that right now, too. There's so much misinformation and mixed information out there, Val, that that's... You know, I wish you could start right now.
But she's also going to be bringing the... You know, she's going to be overseeing all the grants.
All the grants as well.
That's really a valuable thing for... She's got a lot of experience with that, and we definitely need that help.
And then the other one is H. I wanted to talk about Katie Hensley. You know, I've known Katie for a while, but we're... She's going up there in the elections, record specialist position. And... record specialist position. And Katie is a person of integrity, high character, and we are, we're very lucky to, that she's willing to, to take on that work and, and go up there. And it will definitely add value to that, to that department as well. So we, we got some really good hires on here.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Before we do that, um,
You can second and then we can go to discussion.
I'll second. We'll go to discussion.
Okay.
But we may have to table it after I'm done to re, remove, but go ahead. Move for discussion?
Discussion.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ted. Item C. Do we need to postpone that? Um, for, for, um, pending clearance?
I don't think so. I think we gotta, we gotta prove it. And then, you know, it'll, it'll happen once it's pending, once it's cleared, but I think it, that's just a, you know,
It can be approved pending, I think.
Okay.
We can put that in the motion if you want. Cause isn't Ted been cleared to?
No, he's, it's, I mean, he's cleared anyway. We're, we're, we're just, he's permanent over here.
No clearance, um,
Like seages?
Yes.
He's already
No, that's, that's, that's additional. That, he's, he's employed and fully employed at this point, so. He'll be, he's, he's on, he's in his new position.
Okay.
And if we add to it, that'll be fine. So we don't need to do anything.
Copy.
All right. So got a motion, got a second? All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes three to zero. All right. Moving on, discussion, action items, and this is six A. And this is where we get some public comments. Anne, you're first.
You can pull it out if you want and just, yeah. Right on the very bottom.
Is there a green light?
Making a difference. Oh, yeah.
There it is.
There it is.
Just needed to be turned up in the back with the audio. She's good. You're good.
Um, after just hearing the conversation, I just want to say first of all, thank you guys so much for your public service for our county. Really appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to come tonight to reiterate my support for the community-based proposal that was given to you up in Port Orford, um, presented by Ashley Moore. I represent the County of Sodavon Society. We've got 400 members from Brookings all the way up to Langlois. And, um, we support, uh, protection of habitat, good land use, and we think that the proposal put forward is really a good solution at this moment. Um, not only will it help the Kirk County to comply with the law, uh, forestry law, um, it will also help you guys to rectify this ugly clear cut that everybody's bummed out about. It will help you to preclude the gorse infestation that could become a real fire hazard, and it will also really help to address this great community need for housing if we can pull off that part. The parts of it that Ashley put together are really, I think, would address community needs in a wonderful way. So anyway, I just wanted to come down and remind you that a lot of people support this, even though they didn't all come down tonight. Um, and, uh, I hope you will give it some serious thought and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
And next up is Bob.
And I'd like to piggyback on her comment. Thank you for your service in these hard times. Not an easy thing. Thank you. Bob Morrow Langlois, Oregon. Uh, there was only one truly sensible option presented on January 25th at the Port Orford workshop on how to recover from the clear cut of the Pack High Forest. Uh, that was the presentation by local resident, community leader Ashley Moore. It was clearly embraced by all the citizens in attendance. And I support Ashley Moore's plan for the Pack High Forest and encourage you to adopt it this evening. One, it supports the education of our children by brilliantly providing long-term housing for teachers while offering educational opportunities on restoration. Two, it restores the green zone critical to the tourist economy of North Curry County. Folks don't plan their vacations from the big city to go look at a clear cut. Uh, three, uh, 12K is a modest expense to do what is right for the North Curry. North Curry County relies on its tourist economy and tourists want to be around trees. I did not see any clear cuts featured in the recent out-of-state advertising campaign by the county. As you know, Pack High Forest parcel was acquired in a land swap with the state parks. At the time, a long list of options was created on how to utilize the forest in a manner that would generate steady cash flow for the county. The easy out of clear cutting was definitely at the bottom of the list. Despite that choice, you should consider continuing the land swap process established with the state parks. As you know, Boy's Cove Park generates cash flow for the county when it is full of windsurfers and kiteboarders during the summer, drawn by the scenic location and good winds. The view shed from the north end of Floris Lake includes unusable county land at the south end of the lake that would be of great value for the expansion of the state park and protection of the view shed. This would further secure a long-term, this valuable tourist attraction. You should negotiate another land swap with the unusable acreage that the county owns at the south end of Floris Lake. If you owned McVay Park in Brookings, for example, you could establish another source of steady cash flow for the county. Or there may be state park land elsewhere in the state, which they would be comfortable swapping. If we cannot keep the tourist corridor along Highway 101 looking like the Wild Rivers Coast, it may be time to stop advertising how cool it is to be here. Thank you for traveling to Port Orford for the workshop, to hear your constituents come out in support of Ashley's plan. I urge you to do the same tonight. Vote to adopt her well-considered plan for Airport Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob. And there's no further, uh, comments, so we can open with discussion. Anyone like to go first?
Um, well, I think it'd be appropriate since we've had workshops up in Port Orford to do a general overview.
Sure.
Right? So I can read in the description, um, of our prior workings on this. So, um, on July 20th, 2022, the board voted to enter into contract with, uh, CLR Timber Holdings of Brookings South Coast for timber sale. The, the timber sale concerns a 34-acre property on Airport Road in Sixes, Oregon, across the highway from Pacific High School. Uh, in September, 2023, logging began on Airport Road property. The board held a business meeting on September 20th, 2022 in Port Orford and received feedback on the project from local residents. The board then held a workshop on January 17th, 2023 to gain more public input and discuss proposals from the community for next steps, uh, of the land. The board is bringing this to a discussion at, at this time, to go over what they heard from the local residents and how to proceed. So, um, what I, what I heard from the local residents at that workshop um, was, uh, initially a well-thought-out proposal, um, as mentioned, provided by Ashley Moore, um, that, uh, you know, turned, we'll call the, the, the lower end into, uh, a reforested area, um, in initial presentation using, um, multi-floras, right? Uh, multi-different, uh, um, uh, trees, uh, maintain the creek, uh, maybe create a path, something of that nature. And then on the northern half, uh, work with the Pacific High School to provide, um, the opportunity to put in, um, housing. Uh, so, and then from there, uh, many, many folks, um, public commenting in support of that proposal, some hearing it for the first time as we were. Uh, so, um, since then, uh, particularly this week, I've received uh, a, a number of emails in support of this plan as well. And so, um, you know, I think, you know, personally, I think what the next steps in my mind would be, um, you know, if we are in support of this, that we direct, um, our director of operations to move forward with beginning, uh, to enact the, you know, work this plan out. Uh, there are a few moving pieces. The, the south end is a lot easier because that's, it is what it is. It's the north end that has a bit of moving pieces to it. So, um, you know, what that looks like needs to be, uh, discussed. Uh, with that funding coming out of Salem in this, you know, I think I announced it at the workshop. It happened that week. Um, you know, and if, if that funding, because it's for shovel-ready ground, which that ground is pretty shovel-ready. I mean, we have, you gotta get the burn off, do, do all that, but other than that, uh, we have to do some zoning stuff. Um, but if that's a qualif, if that qualifies under county, um, then maybe it's not, you know, maybe it's in our best interest to move forward with that opportunity and then do some kind of an agreement with,
Yeah.
with the, uh, the high school, you know, long-term, et cetera. So, but I think that that's the moving pieces, that some of the parts that we need, um,
Yeah.
our director to, uh, move forward with, uh, looking into.
Well, and the planting of the trees and ordering of the trees, that's a time-sensitive issue. We need to do that. We can take action on that right away. I, I also, uh, spoke to Aaron Miller, who's the superintendent, Langlois Schools. Um, I spoke to him after the workshop and we had a really good conversation and, and, uh, the, the school piece is really important to me. So, I, and I'm a hundred percent in support of Ashley's, uh, plan or, uh, absolutely. And for those of you watching, if you're not familiar with it, uh, you can watch the recording of our workshop that we had in Port Orford. It's very informative and Ashley laid out, uh, a really good plan. And also I got several emails. In fact, I just got one right now, uh, from folks in support of, of, uh, Ashley's idea. And at the end of our workshop, there was, uh, Susan Crawford made a comment about the Green Memorial Park. I thought that was a really good idea as well. And, you know, maybe we can craft, if, if, if everybody's in favor of it, maybe we can, um, craft a motion that allows Director of Operations to order the trees, get that uh, process started so we can get that planted right away and, uh, make that happen and then start the, uh, MOU or, uh, I'm not sure what we would call it, Ted, but, um, with the school district and, and then also further investigate what we need to do for that Green Memorial Park.
Yeah. I mean, um, we'd have to look into the legalities of having a green memorial, what the, what the, what the process is, what, what that's going to entail. Um, you know, my, I'm not super familiar with it, but my assumption initially when I was listening to the proposal, and if somebody may know in here, um, raise your hand, because I'll want some, I know that's not typical to call on anybody. When looking for somebody who may know more than us on the topic, well, I can have it all the time, but regardless, um, I don't know if that incorporates the planting of a tree at the same time.
No, I don't think it does.
Okay, okay.
It comes in after.
Okay.
So I think it's a designated area.
Got it.
And, um, and, uh, there's some, obviously some legal parameters that come around that.
Sure.
But I think, yeah, I think we could do this in stages. I think we get the, the trees planted, get ordered planted, uh, and, and get things going there and then start the, the conversation with the school district to develop whatever contract or MOU or whatever we need for that piece. And then, uh, and then if it's feasible to do the memorial park, I think that was a great idea.
Yeah.
I've missed out to, um, I talked to some foresters who work around here a lot and he put me in touch with some people up at OSU about to talk about this particular different species that are, that, that would go well in that site. So I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, maybe you want to have a diverse, like you said, not monoculture. There's a lot of, there's a lot of diversity that can go in there. And then as far as the, as far as the outside goes, I can contact the school. We can start talking about it, but you know, also, we can just think about, as soon as the weather breaks, we can get some equipment in there. We do have to, you know, we have to
Yeah.
prep the site and if you take the stumps out,
Yeah.
be a good idea and then you'd be that much closer to being able to move forward.
Yeah, but, but I, I do want to, I do want to, uh, make Ashley's plan happen. You know, the other thing I, I want to say, uh, to Ashley, um, is this is how it's supposed to work. You know, it's, it's, when there's a, when, when something happens and, uh, there's a contentious issue or there's something that's not favorable in the community or something that's, you know, uh, contentious in some way. It's really easy to get on social media and start pointing fingers and placing blame and casting hate and discontent. Um, but Ashley came up with a solution and came to us, got community input and solved a problem. And we could use a lot more of that. So, thank you.
You know, Brad, I, I, I look at that, those yum piles and I think, nobody likes burning. I mean, and, and that's usually, but there's so much good firewood in that and I just, I don't know if there's firewood gathers in Port Orford Sixes area and what, what the liability is to let people, Ted, especially that northern, that northern piece. It's drier. You know, it's not, it's not such a mud hole. Um, but man, there's, there's a, there's really a lot of good wood in, in those piles. Have you?
What we've, what we've done in the past, um, and not with the, but municipalities, we had a, remove a bunch of trees out of Zelia.
Okay.
Um, we took the ones that were, would
Burden, yeah.
would be decent firewood and then stacked those along the side and then put out a press release with a date and allowed people, you know, basically, it, you know, two-week window or whatever it was to come get firewood. And most of it was all taken. The rest, um, you know, we hauled off, but, um, but if we're out doing groundwork, like Ted said, and we're removing stumps and we have our big machinery out there, I mean, I guess it could, but
The stumps are going to need to be burned, but there is
Oh, no, they'll be pulled up.
Pulled up and you can
The problem with burning it all there, I mean, it's going to be problematic because it is right by that school too. I think, I think we want to look closely at that and I know it's going to, it is going to add some expense, but we want to think about how we're going to, there, there might be, if, if we can sort it and we can get the stuff, I, I like the idea of anything that, that is, you know, uh, convertible into firewood, we could move it to, I don't know, somewhere, some piece of county property near there that we could, that it would be available for people to cut up, kind of at their leisure. That'd be great. But then we have to think about, about, you know, either shipping or, or do it, you know, if we're, if we're talking about rehabbing that site and doing it in a, in a way that, that is, you know, actually really sustainable, I think you do better if you, if you don't burn, um, if you can, if you can chip it or, or mulch it back into the extent you can. There may be some fires, but I think with the number of those piles there, it's going to look like, you know, World War I for a long time.
Look like last September.
Yeah, and, and, um, and it's going to, it's going to go on for months and months and months. And right next to a school, um, this is the problem with, with doing a, a, an operation like that, even quasi. Now, I, I know, you know, like when the, when the, when the cranberry people light their, light their stuff up in the middle of the summer and it gets all smoky, that's bad enough, but I mean, this, this would be long and, and pervasive. It won't just go out.
The, uh, no, I was going to say if we burn, it'd probably be best like spring break.
Right.
When the kids aren't in school. Um, the, one of the comments that was brought to me about chipping was that we would essentially be spreading the gorse.
Yeah.
That if, that's, that's in the piles, chipped up, it back into the ground.
Is there a lot of, is there gorse in the piles right now? I, I wasn't aware that there was a big gorse population on the, on the ground when it got logged. What?
Are you asking?
Well, yeah, I don't know.
There was some around the perimeter of the area. We don't know if there was any.
So So, I mean, maybe what we do is we, yeah, I mean, it would
So, I mean, maybe what we do is we, yeah, I mean, it would be, it would surprise me that there would be gorse. And if you've got, that was mostly big timber that was, you know, that had a big canopy. It might be, so, so maybe we chip the stuff in the middle and we haul the stuff off and we, and we, and we do that in a way that where it might be suspected, we, we minimize that. And, and you know, unfortunately, you want, there's going to be some gorse infestation. It's, that's where it lives. So we're going to have to take action on that. And, you know, the best way to handle that is, is, you know, spraying.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing else really works. So, but if we minimize it, then it, it, it'll be a limited problem. It's not going to be a good thing. I don't want to be doing that over here. That, that whole area is, you know, there's a, there's a lot of water there. There's a, there's a
They have a really shallow water table, uh, especially on the south end. And then, uh, they have the creek that comes right there. So they do have quite a bit of water. And, and then it would be a very, very limited leach into that table. I mean, you can't even put, I, from what I understand, and I'm not a geologist or anything, an engineer, but it, the water table is so high in the south side that it would be difficult to put in septic.
Oh, yeah, that's what I read, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, let's get some trees ordered.
All right.
I'll entertain a motion.
I have a quick comment on the gorse. Sorry. I'm not
Got to step up to the
Sorry. Step up to the plate.
I was, uh, told in the past that actually burning gorse would be worse than chipping gorse. Uh, fire releases the seeds and it blows the seeds even further and it doesn't completely alleviate the issue of stopping the spread of it. So it's something to consider too.
Okay, thanks, Patrick.
Certainly true. You said no gap. That'll move, but it's a good wet fire.
So I'd, I'd move to direct, uh, County Director Fitzgerald to, uh, begin the process of, uh, putting this plan together.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right, next is what I added, discussion of future meetings. So we have, uh, we have a need for a workshop and we have a workshop day, uh, set for, uh, February twenty-first at, uh, one P M. And that's a code compliance workshop. And so we need to, uh, we need to approve that, that workshop on the twenty-first. And then we have a budget committee meeting scheduled for February twentieth, but that's Kena's start date. So I think it would be better served if we give her a few days to acclimate. And, um, I know that she's already doing some work on it, so I don't expect it will take too long. But we should, I think it would be in the best interest of being effective to reschedule that budget committee meeting a little bit further out. And I'm open to suggestions on when that might be.
Well, Mr. Chair, what about asking her, what, you know, telling her the situation and then say, what do you think? You know, can we go on the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth of February? Do you need in early March or?
Okay.
I think she would, you know, be, you know, and, and Dave is our, is our guy that we, you know, we need to let him know as soon as possible because he's the one that has the most, you know, hardest time to get here.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, we'll cancel the twentieth, the budget committee meeting on the twentieth and then, um, we'll reach out to Kena and see
Okay.
what, uh,
What she thinks.
what, what, how many days she needs to, to reschedule that. Is everybody good with that?
Well, then we have another problem because we just hired a, one of our budget committee members as a county employee and is, is that okay?
Well, we're going to have to fill that spot.
Yeah, okay. She can't be both.
No.
Okay.
No. Sorry, Val.
So we need somebody from South County, somebody from South County, if you can hear, um, that likes budgets. If there's not much to budget, should be easy, right?
Should be. So if everybody's in agreeance for the workshop on the twenty-first at one, uh, uh, one P M.
Yep, that's code compliance?
Code compliance. So that's Garrett.
Oh, okay.
Okay, in here?
In here. So I'd make a motion to add that to the workshop.
I don't think you need a motion.
I think we do.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty-first of February.
You're welcome.
Passes three to zero. Um, let's see, what is next on our agenda?
Elected official updates.
Commissioner Updates.
Oh, elected official.
Oh, elected officials.
Elected.
Yes. Thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
Dave Barnes.
Thank you, Dave Barnes. I just wanted to thank you personally for recognizing Ashley's contribution to this. Um, and that's how I ended up being the county treasurer. You come out, you become involved with things and if you, it's more than just coming out and complaining to people. It's about coming out and contributing. Everybody can complain. Nobody wants to fuck with the solution. That's something that Ashley did. And, you know, I just want to tell people out there, if you're watching, if you have a problem, find a solution to it and come and talk to people about it. You know, everybody in front of this room is willing to listen and get things done. And I just, this is the way things are supposed to happen. It's the way it happened tonight. And I just want to say that I'm proud of you, Ashley, and I'm proud of you guys for listening to her and, you know, good job. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Commissioner Updates, Commissioner Herzog, you're up first.
Well, I just want to reiterate that, that opportunity we have coming in May to vote on a, uh, are we, is it a levy or?
It's a levy.
It's a levy. And, uh, we, if we, we, we have to fund law enforcement. And, um, so we, so I don't get calls from ladies like Virginia Fetter's who has her place broken into and rampaged by people who just don't care. They just do not care about their fellow humans that they, they think that they're prob- if, if nobody's there, then that's, it's open season on a, on a house or especially if it's off the, you know, out of, out of the city limits and, and up a dirt road. And, uh, I don't know if we can even, Jay and I talked a little bit about this, about, it's not just Measure one-ten's fault. This has been happening for a while and, uh, it's, it's got to stop and it's just got to stop.
Yeah, no, uh, one-ten amplified
Yeah.
the situation, obviously. And, uh, you know, I just would reiterate that, um, number one, um, great job, uh, on your state of the county address. I think you hit
Thank you.
Uh, it was very comprehensive. You hit a lot of great areas. And, uh, Ashley, as to you, great job as well, putting this together, um, this proposal. I think with the, um, in terms of the proposed levy, um, you know, the key is this levy will provide twenty-four-seven coverage, right? This level will maintain the jail, um, for the cities to be able to put folks into. This, this levy will ensure that we can continue to prosecute crime. And, uh, you know, I think that, um, that's vital. Those are key things.
With no burden on the general fund.
Correct. Well, I mean,
Not
it will be funded.
Yeah, it'll be funded.
It will be funded. And, um, you know, I think that is the key. And, uh, I'm glad that, uh, you were able to articulate that in your state of the county as well. And, uh, I would highly suggest that if anybody, you guys are still here, so that's good. But any, anybody who is, um, interested, uh, in assisting with this, as it's going to need a lot of, a lot of hands pulling this through the finish line.
More.
Reach out, uh, please, reach out, um, if you're willing to assist and help in this process as we move closer to May. Um, I believe that, uh, we have to have it, um, to the clerk as a, you know, we have to have it there by March.
March first.
You know, so, um, it gives us a little bit of time because once we officially file, then, you know, it prevents, uh, non-elected county employees from being able to really discuss it, especially on company time. And so we're going to need a, we're going to need a team of locals to help, uh, push this through. So if you are interested and you, you, you are, value public safety and you have, you're willing to help on this situation, please reach out because we will need that help.
All right, I have one, um,
You already spoke for like twenty minutes to start the meeting. Like you have no time left.
I have, I just have one thing that I wanted to share with you, which is an update from the Lipsec Committee. Um, we had, uh, Summer from OLCC, uh, was there at the committee and we, um, discussed coming up with a plan to present to the Fair Board, um, which will, which will provide, uh, some recommendations to prevent, uh, juveniles from having access to alcohol during the fair. That was, uh, an issue that we discussed in a prior workshop. I got a lot of calls about that during the fair last year. So the Lipsec's going to work with her, make some recommendations. And then I also spoke to her afterwards and I plan on, um, her coming to the Fair Board meeting and presenting some information there as well. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, just to update you on some of the things that happened in Lipsec. That's all I had. Anything else? Ted, you were kind of quiet tonight.
I, I'm just
Don't get him started.
All right. All right, uh, I will adjourn this meeting and thank you.